...of allegiance, visitors comments, old business, which are Halloween dates and rain dates, reminder of potential equine farm applicants in possession tomorrow, other old business, treasurer collector department update, new business, new employee for MART, ambulance service zone plan, town administrator review, other new business, minutes for August 29, 2022, discussion and or vote relative to ARPA funding, potential applicant Commonwealth equine and informational meeting Tuesday, September 27, 2022, committee reports, town administrator report, signatures and approvals, selection around the event at Sherwood. So if you would find rising, you will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have to say that even when I still stand up here and say, I'm like, gosh, I feel like I'm gonna say the birds wrong because they're just going back to my school thing. I think I did. So don't know that. That's okay, judgment free. Next item on the agenda is visitors comments, any comments from visitors? Old business, first item is Halloween dates and rain dates.
So the last meeting, we were gonna go back to the police, I was, right, go back to the police and to Lauren, because she runs that trick-or-treating thing, and see what dates were best for them. And so the chief said Saturday or Sunday, the 29th or 30th would be best, and potentially if both rain, we could have it on the 31st. And Lauren agreed and said, you know, Saturday or Sunday would be great, and Saturday would be even better. So the 29th with a rain date of the 30th, with a rain rain date of the 31st.
How does that fit in with New Rain Tree? Does that work with New Rain Tree?
I don't have any idea.
Because, just because that's where the Harvard Police Station is, in New Rain Tree, so they'd have to do it twice.
But if the chief okayed it?
Yeah.
He was okay with that.
He did.
Okay. You guys okay with the 29th with a rain date of the 30th?
What time, hours?
Were there any preference on hours?
No.
Normally, there's hours, normally it's like five to seven, or, you know, four to six, or, we don't, we typically set hours.
The kids don't come out very early, they like it to get dark.
Yeah.
Five to eight?
I don't have a problem with five. If we do it on Saturday, five to eight?
With a rain date of 10:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm doing another card. Yeah, okay. So I think, is letter B and nine the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll tackle the letter B and nine at the same time. Reminder about potential equine farm applicants in possession tomorrow. Just a poll, did anyone in the audience receive this in their mailbox? You got it today, did you get it today, Saturday? Saturday, did anybody else receive it?
Did you have a P L box, or?
Okay. Well, there is out, there is this out there.
I live in Ware, but I didn't check my mail, I was away.
Only residents.
Yeah, but she's a hard resident, but you have her mail.
Oh, mailing is where, oh, that's.
Right, so we have the same issue, mine comes from Ware.
I pick up three, from three mailboxes on Saturday.
I picked my mail up today, too.
So the, what it basically says is, it's just, I'll read it, "Our proposal is developed by horse and agricultural enthusiasts. The next chapter of Great Meadow Brook Farm will continue its legacy, providing a place for horses to breed, train, retire, and race, all while preserving this farm which is emboldened, so deeply cherished by the community. On the backside, Great Meadow Brook Farm is a special place, its next chapter will continue its proud legacy of agriculture and protecting open space for future generations. Our proposal includes thoroughbred breeding program, agricultural and equestrian festivals, off-the-track thoroughbred retirement, stables, paddocks, and equestrian center, training and racing facilities for thoroughbreds, agricultural program for local students, thoroughbred racing, no more than 20 days per year onsite wagering, all non-festival days, informational forum Tuesday, September 27, 2022, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., Harvick Elementary School, 76 Schoolhouse Drive. Visit our website at www commonwealthraisingracingllc.com. Questions, email mary@commonwealthraisingllc.com." So just a reminder that if you want, it is not this board presenting, they are presenting, so come with questions that you would like answered, that's really the purpose of tomorrow night. We do also, confirming, we do also have another on October 3rd, is that happening on October 3rd?
Yes, that is happening on October 3rd, is, it's in, it was in the paper last week.
The hearing.
The hearing, the public hearing is on October 3rd.
That will also be at the school, then?
It will also be at the school, also at 6:30. Official public hear, and so it went on Facebook, it went on our website, it's going in a code red, there were over 15,000 views on Facebook of it, which I've never seen in any town, I don't even know if I've seen it in the city of Springfield, so I think it really got out there.
For the informational session for tomorrow.
For the informational session, and then on the bottom, and also notes, the public hearing next week.
Okay, great. Anything else we have to talk about on October 3rd?
Only that, I have, I also have the entire presentation to give you guys, that was given to me, that I just opened today. So this is, this was sent to you guys, but I just got it, so, this is the presentation I believe that they'll be doing tomorrow.
Okay.
I got it on Friday, but I didn't open it because it was official town business and I wasn't here, so. And I emailed it to you guys, too, just a little while ago.
So they posted it on our list, so can we see that?
I didn't, I don't think, I don't know, I might have.
Is it, before or the thing about the Baker fleet of grades?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see.
So maybe you can forward to that, that was accurate.
It's probably over there in my mailbox, because I just did it.
Right. Anything else on the informational session here? Okay. Any other old business? So I guess I would talk about, maybe under old business, the cable contract, and that must been, I don't, I don't know, and maybe it's in your report.
Yeah, we have to, wait a minute, we have to act on that.
Right, by the end of October.
I do have, I do have some information, not, I don't have, it's definitely not all of it, but.
So it's actually, so the status of it, Nicole, it's actually with town council, correct?
Yeah, the status is that it is with, we have sent it out to the town council, who deals with cable contracts, who also knows Eileen Lady, and he is recommending some legal language that's in there, he says that it's in most of the cable contracts, he had, he had some other recommendations, but, and he told me he was gonna, I was gonna have them today, but I don't have them, and that slipped by my mind to, to remind him. But I, he's gonna redline it to give it back to you guys, and probably recommend that you vote on it on the October 24th meeting.
One of the things that we voted on the last meeting, which we voted on the rate, and remind, we've been able, what the rate is called.
The peg.
Yeah, that, it's, that's what it's called in the contract.
It's not a transmission rate, it's a.
The percentage rate.
Right, right.
So we voted, we were at 4%, I believe, in the current contract?
Correct.
We voted to put it on the three. But we could also, I mean, if we're really looking at it, we could adjust if we wanted, the prior contract had a graduated rate, so after so many years, it's two, three, four, we could do that, because it's a, yeah, it's a 10-year, it's a 10-year.
Yeah, three, three and a half, four, we got, or square. We have, we haven't used the funds, we're not using them, so I.
So, so the attorney will have a recommendation on that, too. And the thing is, the reason that you have that is in case you need to upgrade, like, we, we had to buy these, if you ever have to buy more cameras, I thought possibly in the future, we might wanna put some at the elementary school. I don't know, you know, the legality of that either, but, you know, in the future, maybe making it more accessible, that's where that comes from.
So maybe we'll revisit that with his redline, so we have the opportunity to.
Yeah, we have like 207,000 already in there, so.
We did just use some, because we voted to service everyone.
Yes, we did.
Fifty thousand dollars to extend services.
And to do this, and to pay the guy to do that, that's where we.
Yep. Okay, so that'll be on one of our October meetings. Any other old business? Treasure collector department update, Nicole?
Yeah, I am sorry, I have to say this, I updated it, when we talked the other day, I updated it in my town government, but I didn't print out a new agenda, so the cable contract is on the agenda.
Okay, so we.
That's the only difference, but I.
Just discuss this.
It looks fine, we discussed it.
Yeah.
We're good.
So sorry about that, I, it's, so it's, the agenda you have is a little off, it doesn't have a Comcast contract for renewal update.
And I took it out of order, so sorry.
No, it wasn't in there, so we're, thank you. Sorry about that.
It was pretty cool. So the next item is the treasurer collector department update.
Yeah, so I just received this literally about 10 minutes ago, so we haven't had a chance to review it, so I can put it on the next agenda, if you guys wanna just be able to review it, take some time.
Yeah, so why don't we just take it under advisement, and we can talk about it under the next, if we have questions, we can bring them through the poll, and she can bring them to Sarah. This was prepared by Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind reading through it, you know, thoroughly, seeing where they're at.
Understood, so we can put that on the next agenda. And maybe, I don't know, Sarah needs to be here, but if she wanted to be here, it would probably look more like the financial team. Next item on the agenda is new business, new employee, Pauline.
So under separate cover, due to the confidentiality of an application, you guys have that, and the cover letter from Sharon, who is the coordinator for MART, to approve Pauline Supka for the part-time MART bus driver. She's been interviewed, she's capable, she was recommended by some of the drivers, and I also already did a quarry, so she's all set there, she has to take, MART has to do a drug test, and, yeah, she has to take a course, so.
So confirming that this, how many hours is the position, and what's the rate? It says what she's looking for, but it's.
But I don't believe that's the.
The rate is 1425 an hour, but that's what we brought up to minimum wage.
Yep.
And I believe the hours are seven, but I will confirm that. Because I may be mistaking it with recycling, it may be less than.
So now we just brought them all up, we brought them up to what, other towns?
We brought them up to Massachusetts.
Because they're being reimbursed from MART.
Right. Oh, that's right, we brought them up to other towns, we're right.
We brought them up based on MART's.
Right.
Yeah, because they're reimbursed from MART, they're not.
That's right, you're absolutely right, and it was, I have to pull it up, I think it was like 1583.
I'm happy to make a recommendation, as, you know, I would make a recommendation that we have from Pauline Supka for a part-time MART elder bus van driver, with the rate of other MART drivers as reimbursed from MART, based on approximately seven hours a week, would, coming from the recommendation, you know, shall.
Any other discussion? Here again, I will call for a vote, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed, anyone standing, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the ambulance service zone plan. So Nicole, I'm gonna give this back to you, so that's all for information, would you mind just writing it down?
Oh, sure, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna worry about floating around.
Okay.
Thank you.
So last Wednesday, the emergency management director, Eric Fulheim, and Lieutenant Landine, who works for the 911 dispatch, he oversees that, Dan McCall, who is our ambulance service for part of Harvick, and I had a meeting with Tina.
Dixon.
Yes, Tina Dixon, that's exactly right. And so instead of just going over a couple of them, we decided to take hours and go through it all, as Tina's recommendation, to finish it and approve it and get it sent back to her, so she can send it off for the other approvals. So she actually filled in most of it as we were sitting here, and then forwarded it.
I did those sort of previously, it looked like it had been brought up to date with who was responding. So in part B, we refer to, is this historical, we refer to Captain Bert Deverney, is this the historical, how this was, because I'm certain, he didn't certainly have any input into this.
No.
That's what I have a question for.
Right, right. So, so was that like?
Because he already, he, he had already written this, so it was, used the information of the comprehensive plan handled by Captain Deverney, which was so funny, because every time they kept saying Bert Deverney, I thought they were saying Bert and Ernie, and I thought it was like some sort of code.
So his first name is spelled wrong, it's not B U R T, it's B E R T.
That's probably been wrong since it was originally done.
It probably is.
Yeah, this, this to me was just like a narrative on the history.
Right. So is this the original one?
This is the original one that's updated, because the, the meeting, you know, the nuts and holes were already there.
So is part B intended to be the original one, or the current? Because it's so, has the Harvard Police Chief as James Owen, which isn't correct.
No, but down below, it's, it references.
Other first responders.
Yeah, yeah.
Robert Gauske's name is spelled wrong, I think there's, so, so do we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. No, part B's supposed to be.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think Eric Fulheim's name is spelled wrong, so I think there needs to be, perhaps we can, so what's the timing on when we need to execute this?
I don't think that has to be done tonight, we can.
So can we take it under advisement, and can we, all three of us, look through it again, and just make any edits for?
Because we flipped through this once before, and we kicked it back because things weren't right in it.
Yeah, so I think.
I mean, I don't, I don't really have any, I didn't really have anything to do with this, you know, Sophia, I was just here.
So why don't, maybe let's just take a look through, have, has, have the folks that were in the room, Dan McCall?
Seamus, yeah.
Kevin Landine?
Not complete, because again, 99% of it was done in the room.
So can we maybe kick it back to them, too?
Sure.
And have them provide their input, and maybe we could plan.
Make sure names are spelled correctly throughout.
Yes, and we can plan a looking visit at, at our next meeting. Okay. Thank you, it's a good step in the right direction.
Yeah, it's more updated than it was last time.
I think we're in one of the last, we're kind of in one of the last.
Any other thoughts on the other service? Okay, the next item on the agenda, I'm just making sure I fill in all of that, was the town administrator review, we're still gathering the information, so although very important, we have asked Nicole if we could put it off till our next meeting, our next meeting is potentially Thursday, but we probably won't have time, so for our next scheduled meeting, and again, unfortunately, we've been moving this down the agenda, but we've had a lot of stuff going on, and don't wanna discount this and provide enough time for the close alterations of lots of cars. Any other new business that we need to break forward?
I was just gonna say the grant, but that can go under approval, because you need to prove that grant.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is minutes, August 29, 2022. It's nice to have minutes on the agenda to, to vote, how is, I'm sort of speaking about that, we can talk about that actually in the report, I'll bring it up, all the status of the others.
So I definitely have some comments on these.
Yeah.
Under, so a project, deciding on location, so we can use timeframe, should be location of pump station.
So, okay, yeah.
Two locations were Eagle Hill and Grand Metro, that's not up here at all.
I know.
The, the motion that was made, that I made, to put the pump station at said location is not included here, nor is how the vote went, so that should be included here.
So can we, if we now in our next meeting, if we have edits, can we get them sent to Nicole, so she can have easy update the minutes?
Yes, I'm certainly gonna go through them if I have to.
It's just, I think.
Needs to be accurate, for sure.
Yeah, and I don't wanna say especially with this project going, but I think we need to keep tiny records of everything that.
So we have hefty things, hefty amount of things that we're, we're kicking forward till, till next meeting. Discussion and or vote on ARPA funding?
So I have an updated quote through tie sales for the, for the meters for water. We have things in stock and things up to four months out. It's the same quote from May, so it has not changed, but I think that it's probably important that we probably get it voted on sooner than later, so they can order the equipment. We're still reviewing rates and regulations, of course, so that's gonna take some time, and we need legal in there, we need some, some weight, some, some weighing in from professionals, the, the regulations really need to be read up.
I was gonna say, is, are there?
There are some, and they say, in the regulations, I don't know exactly what it was, it says, "All the users will pay for the town's use." Says it. So a lot of things in there, you know, so I think that really needs to be updated, but in the meantime, I think I would suggest that we are gonna go with this, regardless of what we're gonna eventually do for regulations and rates, that we should really get these meters, and I, I mean, I don't know that they'll be in by the next reading, but.
No, chances are, they're, they'll, they'll take a while to come in.
Well, then, so the thing is, like, it's hard to read these meters, it's hard to get in people's houses, and that's part of the regulations we need to write, too, is, you know, that we need to be able to go on their property, or whatever we have to do, but I think that we should at least get them on order, and get, and, and hopefully, they'll be in sooner than later. This is the quote, it was updated on 9/21, I added in the install charge for East National Water, and it comes up to about $30,750, and not about, $30,749. It's about $80 for them to install each meter.
$30,700?
Forty-nine. But if you would auth, you know, authorize and not to exceed a little more, that would probably be helpful, in case there's something else, even another part or something.
So what are you thinking, not just exceed, be like $32,000?
Exactly, not that much, but.
Just a little.
Something, yeah.
I don't disagree, but it's time to maybe do some improvements up there, we talked about it for a while, as far as, you know, updates up there.
And we did, and we talked about it at the Water Commission meeting that we had in our last meeting, before our last meeting.
And I think if we use ARPA funds for this, you know, that would be super helpful for users, that you're not taking on that burden, I look at you, because I know you're on their hands, so, you know, for, for anyone that's a user, we're not gonna try to put the burden on them, but we're, you know, in the safe sense, updating our infrastructure up there for the water district. I would make a motion, excuse me, to fund all new meters for the Harvick Center Water District, you saying that right, Harvick Center Water District?
Yeah.
Not to exceed an amount, actually, meters and installation, not to exceed an amount of $32,000, to be funded through ARPA funding, I don't know if I said that, sorry.
So it's been moved in second, any other discussion? And I will ask for a vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
ARPA money thing, did Marty talk to you today?
Yeah.
Going, to be forward about?
About the, sorry, yeah, I just, we have to award it, and so I need to get the other, like, quotes that he got, and then, you've already approved it, so I just have to award it.
There's enough for we approve?
He said it went up, but it was still under what you approved, you approved like not to exceed 40,000.
Was that to do the work up there, I, we kept running into the.
Yes, the extra.
So we have approved it, it's just a matter of.
Let's try and make sure it's, we didn't exceed whatever it was.
No, I would have to come back to you if that was the case, for sure, because we couldn't exceed it.
Well, if we need to do any more, like Thursday, maybe.
I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow, he called, I called him today for something else, and then he told me about it, actually, I missed his call, that's why I called him back, and, and he said he was gonna come see me tomorrow, with the paperwork gonna start.
Very good, thank you.
So if we need to ask Kelly, if we need to revisit this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll put it on, yeah, sure, yeah.
We also keep like a running tally, can we have?
We have that, absolutely, I can send it to you, yep, I've got it.
Okay. Anything else on the ARPA fund? So have we pretty much hit all the projects that we had talked about?
I think so, I mean, I think.
Silver?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have anything else on my horizon at the moment, so you've got it all.
Okay, the hydrants, right?
Yeah.
The silver?
Yeah.
Shoes, meters?
Actually, I have everything up here, because I keep, we keep, again, very detailed information because of the funding that comes from, hydrants, new website.
Oh, yeah.
Where are we at?
I'm just starting to provide the information that they need, I had to give them a logo, had to give them colors, I had to give them, you know, like, is it gonna be a banner, is it gonna be, you know, so just starting the design.
Work with them.
Yeah.
Great, good, I'll be excited.
Treasure collector, to move the offices, once we can get our telephones.
Yeah, how is that coming?
Just relying, it's kind of, uh, let's see, IT office, so anyways, that's, yeah, you've got it all, we're done, good. The, moving the offices is dependent on the telephones, I can't really seem to be getting, I can't seem to get. I can't really seem to be getting, I can't seem to get anybody to reply to me, um, except for one company. And not the company that we currently have, but another company came out to kind of look at the phones, look at the system. It's really, it's really complicated. It really is when it comes to these voice over IPs. Um, and then Angie also said, I think at her work or something like that, Comcast does it. So we've reached out to Comcast too, and we just had a meeting with them today at twelve to discuss our needs. And, you know, so we're looking at, to see what the most economical is. Um, and, and we'd like to get it done, you know, relatively quickly, quickly too. But if we can't get it done for a few months, I'm really gonna try to get the phones reprogrammed. Because it's terrible, like, the clerk collector's down here, and they're upstairs, and, and AMG's not the collector. So she needs it in line, so I'm gonna see how that, you know, what timeframe it is. Um, but I, you know, I don't know. So I don't know what is gonna happen with that. Right now, I have zero idea about the costs or anything.
Okay. So stay tuned. Um, so we've already talked about, um, the next item, which is a potential applicant. Um, just if the, um, board doesn't mind, we had some people come in late and they missed visitors' comments. Did you?
No.
And I just wanted to acknowledge, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to bring forward to the board.
No.
We're happy to have you sit here. I just didn't wanna call you out, but it, just some new faces, so I didn't wanna ignore you. If you guys had something that you guys wanted to say.
No, we're just, just listening in and.
Great.
We're new in town.
Oh, perfect. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Um, committee reports. I don't think we, we were emailed the police department report directly. Any other committee reports in the whole, or no? Okay. Town administrator reports.
So I decided that I would give you guys what you're working on that's new and then the things that are ongoing that are not resolved yet. Because I don't want it to seem like it's redundant or like I'm trying to fill up a page. But I want you to still, you know, be aware of things that we have been working on that aren't resolved yet. As they get resolved, they'll fall off. But once again, these are on the website, on our page. I put the, oh, I, maybe not the last one. We'll see tomorrow when they're all up. Um, and I'll always start out with the USDA update. We went out to bid for Project One on Wednesday, September seventh. We have approximately ten bid requests thus far. We had a pre-bid conference Wednesday, Sep- Wednesday, September fourteenth at nine AM. Three contractors showed up, and the bidding opening is tomorrow, September twenty-seventh, ten AM. Um, and DPC, on the town's behalf, will be submitting an NOI to Conservation Commission uh, for the proposed pump station, uh, as due to wetland flagging, and hopefully to be heard at the October meeting. Um, we have potential new applicants. This was on the agenda. And there was the flyer that was, um, allegedly, or supposed to be, sent out to all of the residents um, in, in your folders, or in your packets. Uh, at two twenty-eight Berry Road, prospective applicants are proposing a horse farm with racing days up to twenty per year. Board of Selectmen must approve location, and the informational hearing is tomorrow at six-thirty at the Hardwick Elementary School, where our council will be present. It was posted on Facebook, uh, website. It's in Town Hall, and we'll send out a code red. Um, I don't have any other information about that, but we did get it out as much as we possibly could. Um, Council on Aging will be holding office hours again, beginning September twenty-seventh at twelve-thirty at Quavina Estates, and on September twenty-eighth at the Municipal Building at ten AM. They will be here for an hour at each place unless otherwise necessary, so if there's more people, they'll stay longer. But they'll be here for at least an hour. Um, the ghost walk is October fifteenth. I really wanna get that out, because I think it's such a cool thing. Um, but I don't necessarily have all of the information in the newsletter. It said to look on the website, but when I look on the website, I don't see it. So I asked Liz, and, um, oh, I'm, you know what?
I don't have an update.
You have a new, you have a new packet.
I do have, okay. I printed it though.
Yes, so I'm sorry, give you the packet.
That's okay.
Because I, that's.
I was like, wait, I'm missing stuff.
That was the only other thing, was the, um, was the Council on Aging that I had forgotten to put in there. Sorry.
There we go. Yep. I got it.
Um, so I'll get more information for the next meeting, and we'll make sure that it's up on the website and, and all the information.
Just a question of whether it's five-thirty or six o'clock, I think. Um, it's ni- it's nice if it's a little light when the ghosts come out of the townhouse singing and go to their places in the cemetery. Um.
I have no idea what time it'll be, like, it's October fifteenth. Maybe it'll be dark by then. I don't know. I'm not sure.
No, it won't. It won't.
Okay.
So we're, that's what the, uh, thing is, uh, what time, for sure.
So that's what the holdup is, putting it out there?
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Will you decide that? Because that's just a couple of weeks now.
I know. I, we're going clean gravestones tomorrow. Discuss.
So maybe the meeting of the minds can decide exactly what time. Perfect.
I wanted to bring this to your attention. Um, we have been having some experi- we've been experiencing some difficulty with the Chair of the Board of Health. Um, he's been quarreling with applicants and even more so with Lester, with our, um, partnership that we have, the consortium, for the next five years with. Um, it's been ongoing, and I, I'm trying to let it resolve itself and, um, try to work it out where personalities can, um, you know, really work it out themselves. And, and, you know, sometimes you're not going to agree with somebody else on a board or what the board wants. Um, and, and have the applicants, um, just understand that what, what, this is what the board wants. This is what you're gonna submit, and this is, this is how it's gonna go. Um, but I am getting more, oft, more than once a week, for sure. I can't say daily, but I'm getting, um, some complaints from applicants and residents and vendors. And, um, obviously, our Lester people. And so I just wanted to bring this to your attention. He's an elected official, so there's that. But, um, I guess I just wanted to let you all know that there is some difficulty in town. And I see that a board member is present. I don't know if you want to entertain anything else. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, um, that I'm, I'm, I'm experiencing this often.
So, so this is not the first time that we, the boards become aware of this. So can we, um, request that he, um, so one of two things. Um, uh, that we, can we request they attend our next selectman's meeting to talk about some of these issues? Um, in the past, there has been a reluctance to do that. If we experience that, um, perhaps you and I, um, if the board's okay with that, the Chair and Nicole will attend their next meeting um, and talk about some of the concerns. Okay, are you finally okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Ideally. Do we wanna meet with Lester? Do you, like, did we wanna?
Yes. I would, I would hope that you would have all parties and not single out Stan. I'm a, we're a team, and we're trying to establish legally the way things ought to run, not the way they've always run. And that's where the conflicts come, between the, uh, Septic installers and so on. They have to get the forms just right and do it just right. And, um, that's where the friction is. And the personalities are, we've met with Nicole and so on. But we have a hard time communicating with Lester on every level. And so, so it's not just Stan. It's, it's, uh, the whole old structure, you know? When it was done single-handedly by Tex without a hitch, because he was twenty-four-seven, ready to address every problem and fill, knew how to do all the forms and so on. So, and then we come in not knowing anything about it, or I don't. And we've been having a steep learning curve. So now, we're in a position where we're getting organized. And, um, and Stan, um, and, um, a Septic installer yesterday had an argument in the hall. But they came to terms about how it, once the forms are set up exactly as they should be, then sure. And so I think you have to look at systems and not personalities in this, because.
So, so behind you, Judy, Stan just came in. So.
Oh, hi.
Stan, the item we're talking about on the town administrator report is some of the sort of the communication difficulties that are happening surrounding the Board of Health. Whether that's with installers, whether that's with Lester, whether it's vendors. So, um, I just asked, and the, the board just talked about, can we set up a joint meeting with your group? And perhaps making sure we have Lester there as well, it's a good point. So we can kind of talk through some of the difficulties that are happening and sort of resolve that. So there isn't sort of a, make the process a little smoother for everybody. Um, we're happy to go, if, if you, you know, ideally, it'd be nice if you, we could have a joint meeting with our board and your group and Lester too. Um.
But what, what, did you go over complaints or what the problem is?
Um, so it was in the town administrator's report, um, that Nicole was just sort of ex- um, explaining that there's been, um, some difficulties with Lester and ongoing issues. And so, um, just sort of to resolve that. So we're, I mean, obviously, we want this to be cooperative, and if there's something that, you know, we need to do on our end or s- something with regard to Lester to help.
Did Nicole tell you we've already had a meeting with Lester with Nicole?
Um, we are aware of that, but I think it's still, it seems like it maybe hasn't resolved. That's what we're hearing, that there, it hasn't resolved.
I, I would agree. That's true.
So she's bringing it to us, thinking that perhaps we need to be involved as well. So would you, I mean, um, would you, would you be, um, willing to have a meeting with this board? Your board and Lester, again? And if there's other iss- you know, if there's other folks who need to be at that table, we can certainly talk about that. And it can be, I mean, as much as we don't want it to be another meeting, I mean, maybe it needs to be separate than a regularly scheduled selectman's meeting.
Can I, can I ask where the concerns that Nicole, that you're reporting at this time, where are they coming from to you?
I have concerns from our vendors. I have concerns from residents. I have concerns from applicants. I have concerns from Lester. So this is my report, so it's not an agenda item. So it's not something that I feel is appropriate to fully discuss.
Yeah, it's a li- you know, I, I'm happy to have the meeting, but, you know, you know, Nicole, we haven't discussed this, you and me.
Well, you've talked about, not seen about it.
We haven't spoke together since the last meeting with Lester.
So, so Stan, it's just, it's Nicole reporting to us, which is what she needs to do. Um, and we are just, we're not, we don't wanna talk about it at tonight's meeting. It's not on the agenda. It really needs to be either a separate meeting or an agenda item, so that anyone who's interested can come. Um, but if we can, really, all I'm, all we're asking is that there, there can be a joint meeting with folks that need to be in the room. Lester, yourselves, our group, um, and then we can talk about what the issues are at that point.
Okay.
Okay. I, I would take this.
I mean, of course, that, it's possible, but, um, is, just for now, since it's on the table, is, um, are you getting these calls from Francis?
No, I haven't spoken with Francis since we met here.
Yeah, because Francis doesn't respond to any of my emails. And I send him letters saying we have problems that we need to improve upon, and he doesn't respond to anything.
So that would be a great thing that we need to talk about at this meeting. So if you can come with your concerns, Stan, from your perspective, and we'll kind of hear all the concerns and come, try to come to a resolution, so we can make this work a little better. It seems like it's a little disjointed or clunky, or, you know, it's not moving smoothly unless. Causes frustration, I think, on probably for everyone, all sides.
Yeah, it, just, I know you don't wanna belabor it tonight, but there is no process. And, um, the view of how things should handle changes. And documentation is always, isn't always complete. And that, when you bring that up and raise that as a concern, people get upset. And then, okay, for the sake of not getting them accept, you back off and you hope it improves.
So I, I think all of those things are really valid, and we need to sort of understand those. So, um, timeframe, when would we wanna set this meeting up? Not this week, for sure.
There's no other date this week.
So, and next week, we have the public hearing on Monday.
Yes.
My, my suggestion, though, to, right, is that the meeting should really be with Francis and our board and you. And it shouldn't be the Lester Board of Health and our Board of Health and you. I think that's, um, Francis has a responsibility to be directing and managing that. And in his role, in my role, we should be talking together frequently to try and improve the process and improve what we're doing.
So I think you also have other board members on your board. Stan, that would probably be a present.
Well, no, truly, yeah, of course, truly. Of course, truly. I, I don't mean that. But, um, your call, but whatever you wanna do.
So, so let's, um, Nicole, let's come up with a list of interested parties and the date. And let's just make sure that people who need to be there are there. Um, we have a meeting next Monday, or we have the informational meeting next Monday. It is an off week from a selectman's perspective, but, um, our next, so what's the board?
Twenty-four.
What's the?
Yeah, it's the next time. And then I'm gone after next week, until twenty-four.
Um.
I have Tuesday, I'll Wednesday, and then, um.
The fourth or fifth?
Right.
Okay. That's perfect. Um, I'd like to stay away from the fifth, if we, possible. Could we do the fourth?
We could see if that's, see if everyone's available.
Can you do the fourth?
The next Tuesday evening. So Nicole, we'll reach out and just make sure that ever, all the interested parties are available. What time would we wanna do? Six-thirty? Does six-thirty work for everybody? Or do we wanna try to do it earlier?
Can you be earlier for Lester's sake? That's thirty-five minutes.
Well, it's, we're getting.
I mean, I might just not be up yet, and I'll try. If it's, gotta be too early, I might not.
So this is, this would be a joint meeting to the selectmen, the Board of Health, inviting Lester to attend?
So maybe we got, understanding that it might be hard for Lester, but we also wanna make sure our board can attend. Can we look at six or six-thirty?
Mm-hmm.
No, earlier, maybe?
Yeah. That's their late night.
That's gotta be early?
That's their late night anyway.
I was gonna say, that, I was just gonna throw that out there, what about Zoom?
They could call them up or something.
Yeah, so if we wanted to do it earlier, we could do a Zoom component. Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. And Lester could Zoom then.
It might be easier for them.
Everybody.
So I would say, I, I can't be available any earlier than five-thirty. So that's, five-thirty is my earliest. Five is a stretch. No, five-thirty.
We'll say five-thirty and see, and then we'll do a Zoom.
Okay.
To make it easier for people.
Thank you for.
Psychologically, that's not great, but. But you want it in person or not?
Yeah, I prefer not to do it.
Well, I, I think where it's gonna be in person, but for those who can't be here by, like, Rob. Some of us can't make it from our paying jobs to get here on time.
Sure.
But he would have the ability, the flexibility to participate, but he'd participate by Zoom. And if Lester, if there was some reason that they couldn't physically be here in the room, um, they would have the option. Ideally, we'd like him in person.
I think six would work too. That's their late night.
And, and what, and could I ask again, what is the agenda you anticipate?
So Nicole will put that out to everybody, but, uh, as I mentioned, I'd like you to come with your, the goal of the meeting is that, um, that there is discussion of items that are not working on all sides. Um, and so we can sort of, we sense, we're hearing there's conflict.
From, from who, please?
It's in Nicole's report that, um, she's reporting to us that there's some type of conflict or things aren't working properly.
I know, but from who?
I said applicants, residents, and vendors.
Yeah, but that's everybody. Is that e- everybody?
Not everyone.
Then there must be specifically somebody who's complaining.
So, so I think that, I don't think it really matters, Stan, who's complaining. We just, I think we need to address, like, what the issues are. What Nicole is hearing is issues, what you have as issues, and what Lester has as issues.
Well, I, I, I wanna say, the problem I have a little bit with this process is Nicole. is Nicole does not talk, we haven't talked about this for months. We have no communication. And Nicole now is saying to you, there's a problem. But Nicole hasn't, out of a courtesy or at all, approached myself, or I believe Judy, with the problem. So we're gonna have a meeting to address Nicole's agenda, but we don't know what it is.
So, so Stan, Nicole, we'll make sure that there is an agenda that's put out there. If it's helpful, we can, is it, can we put the concerns down, Nicole?
I can, I can work with you on an agenda. And I can talk with you during the day if you come in, but we, I'm not, I can't get into this now. It's not on the agenda, it's not appropriate to talk about it now. I just wanted to bring it to their attention so we can do something in the future. And if you want to come in and see me, I have no problem with that. But I certainly can't start volleying back and forth now about it.
No, I, I want to say, Nicole, that the approach you take to this instigates conflict as well.
Okay, so that's the purpose of the meeting of the fourth, hear you loud and clear, Stan. Let's talk about it when we have time and everybody has, you have a chance to put your thoughts down. Lester has a chance to put their thoughts down, Nicole has concerns. She'll talk to you in the meantime, but the goal of that meeting is to come to some resolution, moving forward process, and we can talk about it all in that time.
What I would like to know, and I know you don't want to confuse this, but I would like to know if there's a resident who's having a problem.
Nicole, I, I don't know the answer to that, Stan. Nicole will have to talk to you about that. And she's, she's familiar that she will.
Because not, not all vendors are happy when we don't jump to their demands and we don't accept incomplete work.
I hear you loud and clear.
But I think we're trying to work for the residents and protect their file, their work, the quality. I don't, there's no doubt that that's what we're trying to do. And that's not, doesn't always make everybody happy.
Understood. Sitting in the seat does not make everybody happy either, so we're in the same boat.
Yeah.
The goal is that we want to try to move this forward and make communication better, make the process better. October fourth, the goal is to start at five-thirty in person here. For those who can't be in person, they'll be on Zoom, and hopefully we can move through some of this. And Nicole, you'll touch base with Stan before then.
Absolutely. I, I'm here all the open hours that we have, so for the most part.
All right. Continuing on with your report.
Okay, so the youth center held an open house on Tuesday, September twenty-first. They got twelve new children. They're always looking for all ages to join, so if you have any school-aged children, they do great, great after-school programs, and they're always going outside and doing fun activities and really trying to grow it. After the pandemic, it kind of dwindled, so they're trying to grow it again. And I want to just sort of throw it out there. We would like to start to explore a new position of a maintenance coordinator slash custodian. Maybe regionalizing with another town. I think that us not having anybody to look at our buildings or to clean our buildings, it's really takes a toll on the rest of us. You know, everybody's like, it's not my job, it's not my job, and then on Thursday night, here I am.
Me, when I got the call, like, at eight o'clock, because Jen was hysterical, because water was pouring down the stairs.
Pouring down the stairs, in gallons and gallons.
Right, because you just don't know.
So, you know, we don't have that, right?
We can't rely on the, or Highway Department to do everything.
No, and he felt really guilty, and I was like, it is not his fault.
Right, it's not, no, it's not.
Um, we need to fix the problem. And I don't think that I want. Exactly. But I don't want our employees getting up on our roofs.
It shouldn't, right.
I don't like any of that. The liability is awful. Never mind the personal feelings, it would, I mean, terrible, so, um, you know.
It's not really pretty to get up there.
Before the next annual town meeting, I, I would like to come to you with more information. I want to reach out to other towns. You know, I don't know if it would be a full-time position. I don't know what other towns have for structures and buildings, you know. Sort of like my accounting thing, I just want to throw it out there, I want to start getting it going and, and hopefully, you know, not to blindside anybody when we get the budget going, but hopefully get a position where everybody can have some relief. You know, somebody that can tinker around even at the townhouse and.
The library too.
The library, all of our buildings.
We had, used to, it would be great to be able to bring that position back.
Great.
Just a suggestion, maybe CMRPC, when we were looking for coordinating regionalization of stuff, they were, they were a good.
So right now, the Community Compact Cabinet, CCC grants are out. And I have been encouraged by the state to go and apply for some, but there's still a bunch of money there. Regionalization and efficiency is one of the programs. IT is another program. I was thinking about maybe digitizing some documents and things like that. I know Ryan really wants to get his office much more organized, so I was looking at those grants, but that'll come.
What is it, CCC, Community?
Community Compact Cabinet.
Cabinet. I missed the contact.
Through the state.
Nice.
So those are kind of the new things. And ongoing, which you'll see in my reports, as I stated before, that I don't want to let them just fall off because we haven't completed them yet. But the retirement insurance, the work, the policy, the personnel policy is out to council, and they don't, they haven't been given a fact yet, but I've thrown a lot at them lately. So when they do, we'll get it in front of the Personnel Committee and then formally in front of the Board of Selectmen. As you know, DLS came out to conduct interviews for Financial Review. Their initial impression was that they feel optimistic on where the town is headed and the accomplishments over the past year. The formal review will take up to twelve weeks. They just finished the last interview with the accountant last Wednesday. So I have on here OSRP update, and I've had it on here for quite a few months. We, CMRPC is working with us to update OSRP, which is Open Space and Recreation Plan, because we would like to get some grants for some park equipment and, you know, some different things for recreation. And they actually just announced today that we received a grant. Julie, you have it. Ten thousand, you have the actual paperwork here. Yeah. I believe it's ten thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Okay, maybe not, well.
Did I take it, or I might have left it?
Okay. So I, I did forward you the email from CMRPC that it was, it was put out today. A bunch of towns got some grants, and we got ten thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars for an updated OSRP plan. So I would like you, if you will, to acknowledge and accept the grant as any of our grants, especially the ones over five thousand dollars, need to be accepted by the Board of Selectmen. I didn't realize, it was just coming in, so I would have had it on the agenda. But under signatures and approvals, I'll ask that you accept that grant, and then we'll have our Open Space and Rec Plan updated.
So it's ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-five?
Okay, ten thousand eight seven five.
Yep, and it's called the Hardwick Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Project.
Accountant Shared Services, as you know, we're working on possibly getting an accountant eventually in the future, maybe sometime. And the, the IMA, which is the intermunicipal agreement, and the job description is with legal to review it and make sure, actually, it's with DLS at the moment because Zach Blake from DLS wanted to look at it. They are also encouraging these types of agreements, but want to make sure that all of the necessary language is in the IMA. The recycling, the container contract, as you know, we're sort of going back and forth with the, with the container company that the recycling coordinator signed a contract with that didn't have the authority to sign. The contract is poorly written. It's for five years, not three years, so all of these procurement issues are there. I really believe that we do not have to honor this agreement, but I'm still going back and forth and turning, so just so you know that. Okay, so there's the Community Compact Cabinet grants that we're looking into, that I just mentioned. And the Water Commission looking into upgrading technology, which we had already discussed. And that's all I have.
Anything else, Nicole, on the report? Okay, can you have some approvals?
Yes, I have, with through that DEP, Bureau of Waste Prevention, the Sustainable Material Recovery Program, there was a checklist for that mattress program, so it's really simple, but it just had to be filled out and sent in. It's supposed to be September first, but I think it went by Christine, so I had her, I had her fill it all out. It's really pretty simple, but you do have to sign it.
We already approved that.
You did approve it. But this is just checklist, and it's so simple. It's kind of crazy that I think they have to do that, but it's something they have to do. And then I would just also.
Do you have that grant?
Yeah.
It's actually in our email.
I'd like to throw in that October eighth, the Cultural Center next door is having a pumpkin painting and with children. It's another fun with art day. We're trying to establish a presence in terms of showing the kids what to do and so on, so.
So Judy, can you get that information, Nicole, so she can put it out on our page?
Absolutely.
If that's okay, Nicole.
Of course.
Thank you.
In our new, in our new website, we'll have community event calendar too, other than just our meeting calendar, so.
Should I date this today?
Oh, yeah, they know it's coming tomorrow.
December twenty-sixth. Do you have that grant?
I do, it's here.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay, you don't, this is from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Twenty-six land use planning assistance grants, so twenty-six, and we're one of them. This is Hardwick's.
Yep, okay. So I would just make a motion to acknowledge and accept the Hardwick Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Project for our ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Can you shift this to me?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good motion, cheers. Thank you. Anything else?
I don't have anything, thank you.
So under Selectmen Roundtable, just want to, you've all received an email. So we've been receiving an email. That was, we've been copied down an email for council relative to Article Ninety-seven, Insight Plan Assessment, which Nicole and I are having a conversation with council tomorrow. So we will provide you an update after that conversation. Anything else in Selectmen Roundtable?
I was just gonna talk about the meeting last week.
Oh, perfect, if that's okay.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So we started back up our selectman meetings with department heads and boards and such. Oh, and Nicole, and it was a very good turnout. I don't know, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen people, I think, maybe about twenty. And, you know, most departments spoke up, a lot, a lot, I don't want to say concerned, but a lot of voice came up about the horse farm and concerns from departments that if this were to go through, obviously, the police department. You know, they would like to be back in town and, and to have more of a presence here. And the Highway Department concerned about the roads. And then the Treasurer brought up a new payroll service system that they were considering. And then Peggy spoke on behalf of the Conservation, that they're very busy. They're working diligently with the Mill Project with that natural heritage because they ran into endangered species that need to be moved, clam, shrimps. Who would have thought, in Hardwick? But they're there, and they need to be addressed and moved properly, I suppose. So they are moving along with them, and it was interesting to hear that, because I wondered what was going on there. She also mentioned that they have a meeting on October nineteenth about the Wheelwright Dam Removal Hearing. So anyone that's interested in going to that should, should attend their meeting on the nineteenth. Eric Bullhun spoke on the Planning Board, talked about solar, and they're really moving forward because it's now moratorium, and that needs, needs to be rectified by November. And they're also looking to rewrite marijuana bylaws. So there'll be some public hearing coming up on that. Marty spoke about the projects that are ongoing, thirty-two, thirty-two A, although they've run into some issues, they are, it is moving forward, and it'll be great once it's all done. Judy spoke about public health. We brought up a few forest and water, and you had some good things to say about just how you're looking at the big picture as a whole, just for public health.
We all need our commonwealth.
Right.
Air, water.
Yep.
Land, which is food. And especially trees.
Right, right.
And shade.
That was, that was very interesting. Recycling, talked about the ten thousand dollar grant for the mattresses, so that was great. And also that Eric won, and he donated twenty-four hundred dollars to the recycling, so that was good. A couple of things that came up concern-wise was cell phones and computers. Not every department has cell phones and computers. And I'm just gonna use Paula as an example for cemetery. Anyone that wants to get in touch with cemetery calls for personal cell phone, at which, I'm sure Paula doesn't mind, but someday it's not gonna be Paula. So I think it's just things, as a board and as, you know, a department, that we need to think about going forward, because again, right now, not so bad, but.
We probably need like a new phone.
You know, everything, so, and a, and a computer. So Nicole was gonna work on that, so.
She's already, we already got a computer and a phone up there, so they can leave messages and she can get them.
Yeah, so that, that's great, you know. But I, you know, I don't know if it's ideal or, you know, fiscally capable to do cell phones for everyone, but I think we really should think about, you know, who, what departments, you know. I don't, personally, use of cell phones is not a good practice for, for any business. And, I mean, we are a public business, so. Just food for thought, yeah, I got rid of that a lot.
Well, because, yeah, they, they can confiscate my cell phone at any time if they want it, if there's an issue with work, and then I'm out of cell phone.
That's what I mean, so it's not a good practice. So I just think it's something, I know not tomorrow or the next day, but over time, I think we need to just try to see what we can do about eliminating that. So that's, that was, I think it went very well. Nicole got snacks, and people liked snacks, and we kept it to an hour. And I think, I think it was good for people to sit and chat, and I don't know who wants to go next.
Did we decide we're gonna do monthly?
Every three months, wasn't it?
I don't know, what do you think, monthly or every three months?
Every month.
Yeah, I, I do think that folks enjoy having the opportunity to speak up a little bit.
That meeting was really what a, a department head meeting, which should be, which I have once a month on Tuesdays at ten o'clock.
So we did encourage everyone to go to those too, you know, not just, you know, when we step in. So I think it's important to maybe keep the all rolling. I, I would say.
Do you want to do one a month?
At least every other, I wouldn't go three.
Do you want to do every other? Does every other work?
I, I think I would go at least every other month to, to engage people, yeah.
So do you, do you want to do the next one, or do you want me to do the next one? And we do typically, so it was this past, it's the third Wednesday?
That's what I just said, and I did, I did here at three o'clock. I know that's not, Rob, that's probably not ideal for you, so.
I mean, I can sacrifice some time.
I, I worked with Nicole to find a time that was good, you know, for her too, so.
Really, three, three o'clock, you might not want to do that.
Well, that's the thought, you know, you hate to keep people later than they, they're already geared for.
Sixteenth.
Right, so.
I'll do the next one, and then, I went to Jersey myself, so.
Oh, that would be easier for you. I, hmm.
Is that busy?
Pick a date with Nicole, you don't lie, I may not have said it today.
Yeah, I may not be, I, I have training, so maybe on the sixteenth, seventeenth.
So do it the week after or the week before?
I'm sure people don't want to come on the day before Thanksgiving.
Well, maybe not that week, but, but work with Nicole, and, you know, I mean, I, that's what I did.
We could tentatively do it on the ninth, Wednesday the ninth.
You may step down too.
No, it's okay.
Like I said, it'd be a little bad if they.
No, we could do Wednesday the ninth at three P.M.
Oh, and another interesting tidbit, and it was interesting to me because I didn't know, and well, my company uses an eight to dial out, that I guess federally, the law was passed that you can't have that on your phone systems because of a woman that was abused.
Right, you can't get out on nine, you know.
Right, yeah, if you don't know to dial the eight first, correct? Or the nine, or whatever the outgoing, you know, number is that you hit first. So they're working on.
the outgoing, you know, number is that you hit first, so they're working on doing such a matter of right.
That's the whole phone system, that our phones don't do that, I mean, we don't dial nine, but our phones don't tell you, if you're calling from the Treasurer's Office, it just says Towne Hardwick, you could be in the library, so, and it really needs to be site-specific to where you are for E-911 purposes. And today, when I was on the phone with Comcast, they, they could have it.
Well, that, so that affects us, I mean, I can push a line, I can push a line to get out.
But do you have to dial an eight or something to get out, like to dial out?
No, we can push the, the button, or you dial nine, and it gives you the next available one. So you have the option of doing either or.
Right, so that's, that's us, too, but if you, all of our phones...
You can only do nine?
I only have a phone that shows the, the numbers. Every other, because I'm like the main phone for the system, every other phone in our building, you just pick up and you have to dial eight to get a dial phone.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, and I guess you're not, you can't, I know, that was food for thought for me.
It's taking some time for people to comply, so...
Yeah.
Anything else under Selectmen Roundtable? Okay, so the next item, you don't have anything further, Nicole?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second? Are all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjoining at seven, or adjoining, adjourning at seven forty-two. So hopefully, we'll see those of you who are interested tomorrow at the informational session, Hardwick Elementary School, at six-thirty.